All right, well, welcome everyone for our Montana State Library Commission Special Meeting. I'm Robin Scribner, Chairman of the Montana State Library Commission, and I call this meeting to order. Excuse me, as your Chair, I'm going to work to ensure that this commission has an effective meeting and transparent decision-making process. We will be, if we are struggling to make a motion at any point, I, as Chair, will allow a discussion on how the motion should be phrased. Not now, this won't be in all motions, but using my discretion, I may allow limited discussion in the phrasing of the motion. I'm, I'd like to ask our Commissioners to introduce themselves and then the staff after them. So go ahead, Tammy, go ahead.
I'm, I'm Tammy Hall, I live in Bozeman, where it's snowing and more snow and snow and it's, it's springtime in the Rockies.
All right, Elsie?
Really? Friday morning in public education, Fridays are one of the best days ever. And so happy Friday to everyone and blessings because Mother's Day weekend is coming, right? So yeah, happy Mother's Day to all.
Thank you, you too. Peggy?
Good morning, I'm coming also from Bozeman and I'm happy the sun is shining.
Great, and Brian?
Uh, Brian Rossman, also in Bozeman, good morning, everybody.
Good morning, and Carmen, sorry Carmen.
I'm Carmen Cuthbertson from Calisbell, good morning.
Good morning, how are you feeling?
Uh, finally, a little better, but still not normal.
Oh.
I am, those, those 12 days in bed with a fever, they don't know what I had, were the sickest I've been in probably 20 or 30 years, and I'm still not back to normal, it's weird.
Well, you don't look like a green broom.
Not anymore. And I've been out of bed for several days, woo-hoo.
Oh, good, good, good. Tom, our Vice Chair.
Uh, Tom Burnett in Bozeman, giving the grandkids a day off from their math drills.
Oh, see, it's Friday. Okay, go ahead Jenny, I'll let you take the rest.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Jenny Staff, the Montana State Librarian, and I'm joined here at the Montana State Library with Genevieve Whitehizer, our Admin Assistant, Melissa Briggs, our Central Services Manager, Sharon Hardwick, our Human Resources Specialist, and Rebecca Camp, our State Data Coordinator.
Welcome, everyone, okay, we'll get going, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Uh, Madam Chair, I would like to add an informational item, I would like to make a statement.
Okay, so we'll put you, we'll put that after, after any other motions are made. Probably, that would be the, before the public comment, is that all right, is that, that's the way it looks like it should work for me, with me?
Yep, that's fine.
Are there any, are there any changes or additions? Okay, if not, we'll get going on the discussion of the executive planning process, is there a motion?
I have a motion.
Yes, Tom?
I move to present to the executive planning process only three new proposals. Additional funds for overdrive of 70K. Additional funds for digital library service to state employees of 50K. And funds for a data support specialist for 67K.
Tom, do you have, that you could email me?
I emailed it to Genevieve, she should be able to put it on our screen.
Tom, would you say what the second one was again?
Yes, additional funds for digital library service to state employees of 50,000.
Thank you, Tom, I got, I found the gift.
Okay, you'll put that on the screen?
Yeah, you need, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, if we could wait a minute for Genevieve to get that on the screen, then I can.
Yeah, give me one more second, I'll have it up. And I can make a bigger thing once I make the phone bigger.
Oh yeah, please.
I got fixed for that.
Okay, thank you, okay, it has been properly moved and seconded. That we present to the executive planning process only three new proposals. Additional funds for overdrive of 70,000. Additional funds for digital library service to state employees of 50,000. And funds for a data support specialist for 67,000. So it goes on and say.
That's, that's another motion.
Yeah, so sorry.
Okay, 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 so, um, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to explain my motion.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
These are the items that were approved at the April meeting imbued uh, by the Commission. On May 1st, Chair Scribner, Commissioner Cuthbertson and I, the Budget Subcommittee, met with our executive staff, it was stated that it should be apparent that a majority of the Commission favors a maintenance, no-growth budget. Staff agreed, that was the recommendation we should put forward to the executive planning process. They said many agencies present a wish list of everything they could want, knowing that only a sliver of it would be accepted by the Budget Office and Legislature. It was obvious to them that such a wish list is impractical. Hence my motion.
Is there any?
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, Jenny.
I just want to confirm that the overdrive funding, the $70,000, uh, is pertaining to the Montana K-12 overdrive collection, which was what was approved in April, not the general Montana Library to Go, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Oh yes, I would like to amend the motion. I move to amend the motion to delete the one FTE research agenda and data resource specialist for 67,000 from that proposal.
I second it.
And just as explanation, um, the more I've looked at this item and the other issues before us, adding a new FT, full-time FT, he just does not make much sense in this budget restraint time.
Okay, so we will need to.
Do we have a second?
Yes, do we have a second for Tammy's?
Or Tom did second.
Oh yeah, Tom, Tom seconded it.
So we need to vote on the amendment, correct?
Yes, we'll vote on the amendment first. Okay, um, it has been.
We need discussion.
Okay, yeah, yes, and yeah, did I ask for discussion, it, we need to, is there any discussion concerning the amendment?
I'd like to make a comment, I felt that we had a really good discussion about this position and the need for it was very apparent because of the reliance we're having on data and collection and how much we are, as a Commissioner, asking her to do and also uh, the support she leads lends to all the libraries as they're doing their reports that are so important for the federal funding and for other, um, planning purposes, so I'm against deleting this.
Anyone else? Okay, if, if there is no further discussion, is there public discussion, is there public comment? And I can't see Genevieve, so you're gonna have to.
Oh, I'm so sorry, no, no, no hands up.
Okay, all right. So it has been properly moved and seconded that we amend the proposal to delete the funds for a data support specialist for 67,000. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, the, from, apparently from, from what I see, the proposal to amend to, to amend the proposal to delete the funds for a data support specialist for 67,000 has passed by a voice vote, okay. Are there any other motions?
I would like to, to amend.
Oh, hold on, sorry, we need to go to the motion, we need to go to the main motion, I'm sorry, go ahead, but we need to take care of this main motion first.
Not if she's amending it.
I
Okay, so we go ahead Carmen.
I would like to amend Tom's motion.
Okay.
I move to take out the additional funds for the K through 12 overdrive of $70,000.
I second it.
I would like to explain the thoughts behind my motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I originally voted for this and I stated at our last business meeting that I'm not in favor of centrally curated collections. I am very much in favor of our libraries sharing their collections with other libraries, which the state library facilitates with the shared catalog and the courier, and I think that's a great way to give library patrons across the state access to other libraries' content. What I'm not in favor of is central collection development. And I've, I've since thought about this overdrive and I think that's what that does. Um, if we can get schools to share their collections like public libraries do, I'm in favor of that, but I'm absolutely against centralized curation of content. So that's why I'm making this motion.
I would like to agree with Carmen on that, I, I think we have better control when we're closer to the people we serve in the local school board, superintendents, teachers, administrators, with their school district children and parents.
So if I could add something here, um, my concern on, is double-edged, but I think I need a little bit more information. What exactly does this 70K do, if I could ask a very top-heavy question?
Thank you Superintendent, these funds allow for school libraries that participate to have access to the overdrive platform of eBooks and online learning materials through that platform. It is those local librarians who participate in this program that are curating a shared collection that's then shared amongst those schools.
Thank you Jenny, so I'm looking at the flow of the dollar. Uh, is the flow of the dollar going to, if the money is not there, is it going to stop a school district like Clancy in order to, uh, visit with the state library, uh, for any type of collection? Is the dollar gonna stop it, or where would they come up with another dollar in order to do this?
Right now, there are a handful of library, of school libraries that are participating in a shared overdrive collection with their local resource dollars. This would, this funding is intended to enhance that. Those libraries that have the ability to fund this kind of shared collection would continue to do that, uh, depending on their local availability to support that.
Thank you, um, and what that does is that solidifies my, um, my agreement to have the 70K removed out. Um, if it's already being allowed and budgets, uh, at the school level, which are tax dollars, can be used for this, um, I would like to possibly know a little bit more, um, if any kind of a vote for it, to know who they are, if they're a larger school district, a smaller school district. I'd also like to see what type of collection they're looking for, uh, to see how that would enhance the teaching and learning within the classroom and specifically on standards in any kind of, uh, reading or math, anything that we are doing. So I'm gonna support, uh, the motion by Carmen so that we have a better understanding in the future, but at this point, choice is being offered, I don't believe 70K is necessary at this time.
Are there any, any other comments? Is there any public discussion?
None online.
Okay. Um, it has been moved and seconded to amend the motion to take out the additional funds of 70K for the overdrive, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay, the amendment to take out the additional funds of 70,000 for the overdrive has been accepted by a voice vote? Are there any other motions?
Madam Chair, can we have one of our little side discussions? I know, I don't know if this should be an amendment or a new motion, but I really would like to have a discussion on maybe increasing, um, the state share to help towards the Montana Shared Catalog and the Montana Library to Go and the OCLC. Those are ones that we wanted to revisit when we were meeting, and so where would be the best place to have that discussion and decide if we can some way decide if we can, um, participate in, in increasing that, I, I feel it's important, I know they're working on the formula for how funding, how they contribute, um, but it would be nice if we could say, well, we're going to add X amount more dollars in that. I think it's important, cost increases, increases have gone up so much, um, for all of these libraries, but those are all of those, um, functions that would hit the most patrons and the most Montanans if we could help in those areas, and then they could use some of their local funds, um, for further development locally, so what would, what would you suggest is a as a good time to have that discussion with this group?
Would it be an amendment? Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Um, I'm just reading from some excerpts from internet research. A main motion is required to begin the decision-making process, a motion requires prior to discussion. So I would suggest to Commissioner, uh, Peggy Taylor that, that she formulate the motion before we discuss.
Okay, okay, so Peggy, so then if you could formulated, um, a quick, if we could get a quick, um, motion or amendment formulated.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and go on, vote on the? Madam Chair?
It would be, I believe it would, go ahead Tammy.
Um, I, I think we should complete this motion because it's based on the fact that we voted on these items at our last meeting and I think Peggy's could stand on its own if she wants to have a discussion about it first. And I had some questions for the staff before we discussed that.
Okay. Okay, so let's go ahead, um, I want you, um, Genevieve, would you, I did abstain from the first vote. I didn't vote on the first vote, I wanted you sorry, but I just didn't, I did not vote. Yeah, Tammy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did abstain, um, okay, so let's go ahead then and vote on the motion that is on the table.
Can we list by how people voted? We just have the names.
Yeah. Okay, so otherwise, everybody said aye. Okay, so yes, so yeah, she will add that.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. Um, so we'll go ahead then and do the motion by and that's it, right there, okay, so, um, okay, so the motion is to move to present to the executive planning process only one new proposal. Additional funds for digital library service to state employees of $50,000. All, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
No.
Who was my no?
Peggy.
Peggy said no.
Oh, excuse me, I wasn't Peggy, I was writing something, I changed that to a yes.
Okay, that's fine, okay, so the motion to present to the executive planning process only one new proposal, additional funds for digital library service to state employees of $50,000, the motion did pass unanimously by a voice vote. Okay, now I'm going, Peggy, are you ready, are there any other motions?
Yes, I'm gonna use Tom's words here, I, I move that we present to the executive planning process the following proposals, and I'm going to use the amounts from, um, the first meeting to the, um, Montana Shared Catalog, 800,000. Montana Library to Go, 700,000, OCLC, 450,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Yes, it has been properly moved and seconded that we present the executive planning process, the following proposal. The Montana Shared Catalog of 800,000, the Library to Go of 700,000, and the OCLC of
450,000.
450,000, thank you. Is there any discussion?
I went with the numbers, um, that were presented with the realization that, um, I would just definitely like to see an increase in our, what our current annual amount is. If we got the whole amount, that would be great, um, it reminds me of, uh, the similar when we presented two years ago and we were able to get the funding for the hospat program, so, um, I think it's, it's something that all of our libraries would benefit if we helped improve these areas.
Is there any chance that, um, so it's basically, um, I guess is it all or nothing, or would, would, could we negotiate it down, um, is there any, is there any?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how to, if we could increase by a percentage, I, yeah, I just would like to see an increase in our
Normal day program.
Funding.
I write, I know, I recognize what you're saying.
That's not trying me, it's for my name.
Elsie, we, here, I just needed, for dinner.
Yes, excuse me, no, I'm, I'm so sorry, this is a, a Friday morning for sure, so if the motion, if the motion is to accept Peggy Taylor's uh, move to present to the executive budget, uh, three new funding proposals, is that the motion that's on the floor right now?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, that is a, a no for me, thank you.
Has it been seconded?
Yeah, it was seconded by Brian.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom.
Um, I'll be voting against the motion because it's a transfer of, um, responsibility from local to, um, to state taxpayers.
Is there any further discussion?
I agree with you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I, I just got a question, were you on Carmen or me?
The, go ahead Tammy, we'll, Carmen, Carmen will get to you in a second.
Okay, um, now, I, I just wanted to clarify, the amounts that we have in front of us that came with the materials are the same or as what we had, um, at the Wednesday meeting? Have these been shortened in any, any way, or have you made lesser requests, or are they exactly the same?
I made them the same as what was on our materials presented there.
Okay, and the staff did not change them in any way?
We did not, they're the same materials you saw in April.
Okay, I, I thought one of the things we had talked about at the last meeting in April was that we would bring in, um, as some smaller amounts requested and maybe some prioritizing of what was most needed and I do not, I, I didn't see that done, and I didn't know if there was clarity on that direction. Or is that why the staff came to the Budget Committee with the recommendation to just not take these items forward? Is it, instead of bringing them down in amount, just don't take them forward?
Jenny?
Would you like me to speak?
Um, yes, go ahead, please.
We had a, a budget planning meeting with the Finance Committee to talk about this meeting where we sought guidance from Commissioners about what you would want to see, and it was during that discussion, as Commissioner Burnett suggested, that the discussion focused on not approving any of your budget requests, and staff recognized that that's the, the intent of the Commission, and we understand that that's the case. Uh, we were not asked at that time to bring any lesser amounts or, or prioritize the requests any further.
Okay, well, I want to thank you for working with us on that to go forward with, with just a minimal budget in these tough times.
Thank you, Tammy.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Carmen.
Um, while I support the work that the state library does on the Montana Shared Catalog, um, and I appreciate that the state library facilitates that and pays the employees to run these programs and negotiates the contracts and by doing so saves local libraries money, because a local library by itself could never run that excellent catalog if they had to purchase their own license. Um, I think that work is great and is exactly what the state library should do, but I agree with Tom that this is just a movement of tax dollars from the local or or the demand for tax dollars from the local level to the statewide level, and I do not support that because I support local control, so I will vote no on this motion.
I guess I, I personally would like to, like, and I should have thought about this earlier, um, perhaps a lower amount for each one of these, um, if we could have had a recommendation for something like that, just because I, I believe in the shared catalog and the library to go, I do understand Tom and Carmen's point about transferring the funding from the local, because we did get some public comment that did say that um, they would be able to take that money then and use it towards other other, um, services to, in their libraries, um, so, yeah, it's kind of a hard, it's a hard one to go through, um. Okay, is there any further discussion, that's my discussion, is there any public discussion?
Madam Chair, before we go to public?
Sorry Tammy, yes.
Oh, it's okay, I've been thinking over this, um, I agree totally with what, um, Commissioner Burnett and, and Commissioner Carmen said, um, I would add to it that one of the libraries who did speak to us at our meeting with the librarians, um, and I appreciated her courage in coming, but she made reference to the fact that this idea to use the, the sharing and transfer $10 million in funding to the state as opposed to the As opposed to the local libraries, obviously, it came from above, it came from us down. And they were thrilled because it would save them money, but it doesn't go back to the taxpayers. And so it's, I you know, I just think we have to remember that we're taking ten million dollars in funding and centralizing it. And I also think that brings with it a lot of decision making on the materials and the resources to be purchased. What the one positive that I do understand is that it would save on duplication. But one of the very concerning. Facets of this, which was mentioned earlier by Carmen for me personally, is the combining to a central location of this decision making. And I I think to transfer all that money, ten million dollars to the. To the Montana State Library and then also that decision making in power. Is at this time is is not financially responsible.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to to address the idea that this adding this funding saves anybody any money. That is a complete illusion. Libraries function on taxpayer dollars, the State Library functions on taxpayer dollars, this is all taxpayer dollars. All we're doing is adding taxes, the local libraries still have the funding they have. And if they don't have to spend it on the Montana Shared Catalog, if the State Library pays for that fully. It just means we're increasing the burden on all our taxpayers, there is no money saved. The local library simply gets more taxpayer dollars, they will still receive the same amount from their local. Funding agency as they do now. And in addition, they will just get more tax dollars through the State Library, so the idea that anybody is saving any money is a complete illusion.
Well said.
I have one other comment, I I just really, I don't think that there's any. With Montana Library to Go, they might be doing some collection development, but the shared catalog and the OCLC are. The structure that they use for sharing materials, so it's not really a collection. But I also think, to me, this goes along with, yes, it is an increase, but would to me, it goes along with our governor and our state's. Push for broadband development and, I mean, what can you use with Montana Library to Go in your you're incurring that. Encouraging that digital, you know. We are trying to help all the patrons of all the state people and it maybe they're not going to the library. In person as much as we talked about, but some of this shared resources would benefit a lot of people. If we could help that help develop it, so.
And if I can just add to this, we Peggy had great thought on that, especially with the broadband and moving into, you know, the next ten years. It to me, it's all about timing, I know the broadband dollars may be flowing, I mean, we still keep our. Our look to see what will be happening, I don't believe this is a budgetary year. To really look to see where the broadband can be expanded. Into the into the libraries, we don't, we're not quite there yet, but it's a great view for the future, but at this point in time right now. I would like to be more fiscally minded and constrained, have a little bit more understanding from the broadband. Discussion that's going to be happening this next legislative session in like about eight months, as well as seeing how this thing unrolls and deploys. Because I'm like with you, we have rural schools, broadband and delivering of education, it's the same as delivering to our patrons here at the State Library. But it's just not the right time yet, so I would like to. Pause if we could and then see what that impact might mean as more. As more optic, more cable and all that other stuff does come into our communities in the rural area, but a good thought, good thought.
Is are there any more comments from commissioners? If not, we'll open it up to public discussion, is there any public discussion? If not, we will put this to the vote. It is seen that there's no further discussion, we'll now vote to move to present the executive planning process, the following promo proposals. Funding for the Montana Shared Catalog of eight hundred thousand, funding of the Library to Go of seven hundred thousand. And funding for the OCLC of four hundred fifty thousand, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no.
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 No. Hey, the proposal to present to the executive planning process, the following proposals. I'm funding for the M S E of eight hundred thousand, funding of the Library to Go of seven hundred thousand, and funding for the OCLC of four hundred fifty thousand. Has been rejected by a voice vote, are there any other motions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Tom.
I move that spending levels in the twenty twenty six twenty seven biennium. Match the twenty four twenty five base, accepting adjustments in House Bill thirteen. And as constrained by the availability of state special revenue funds in the M G I A account. And that there be no request in the in House Bill ten, long range I T planning.
Is there a second?
I would second for discussion purposes.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded that. The spending levels in the twenty twenty six twenty seven biennium match the twenty twenty four twenty five base. Accepting adjustments in House Bill thirteen and is constrained by availability of state special revenue funds in the M G I A account. And that there is no request in the House Bill ten, long range I T planning. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, just to explain my motion briefly.
Go ahead, Tom.
So the goal is to present and live within a no growth budget for the coming biennium. We should be grateful for what we've got and continue to provide excellent service within those limits.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
If I could add, Madam Chair, I don't know what inflation is going to be put on top of that, Tom. Has there been anything that the Budget Office has discussed?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Tom.
I'm contemplating inflation, especially in thirteen, House Bill thirteen. There's likely to be a recommended a pay increase comes through that bill. But as I look at the other. Items of expense in our agency, I don't expect a lot of. Of increases in contracts, operating expenses, some of the line items, so I think the reference to House Bill thirteen should cover. Should cover the the inflation question.
So just to clarify, thank you, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Burnett, when it comes to that inflationary factor. For raises or anything like that, your motion doesn't prohibit that.
Correct, House Bill thirteen is outside of our purview.
Thank you, thank you, thanks for the clarification.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Tammy.
I would like to ask Tom now, does this allow for the additional funding as we need for the. G I S and those programs as their. Growth of their memberships, etc., is that? Keeping it at this level, is that going to hamper them, help them, whatever, how does it affect them?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Hall. Yes, we are in the middle of. Trying to complete our development of the real time network. That's what you're referring to, and.
Yeah.
That's a very businesslike proposition, there's money coming in from subscriptions now, there's goals to. Install more stations around the state. And so it's a very fluid thing, one of the major sources of funds for that, for our share, not not including commercial subscriptions sold. The taxpayer share is the M G I A account, and it's in it's in big trouble. Because based on real estate recordation fees. And they've dropped off significantly from their high a couple of years ago in the real estate rush, so we're expecting. Some difficulty in that account, and my my motion. Allows for some flexibility as the biennium, the twenty six seven biennium. Rolls out for utilizing some of those funds as they become available. In a in a very conservative manner, knowing knowing what we need most and we fund those things. To do with the 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 reference network, the real time network. Now I might explain that the the last phrase, there be no request in House Bill ten, long range I T planning. That. Had two line items on our presentation, one was G I S architecture upgrades and imagery repository. For seven hundred and fifty thousand. This motion does not accommodate that. And the other line item, G I S imagery collection. Where we would go out and take pictures of the whole state and and make that in a central place. And that was nine million dollars, so that House Bill ten request was nine million seven hundred and fifty thousand. And. And this motion does not support that request.
Madam Chair, I just have a question for Tom, you keep saying House Bill thirteen and I don't see thirteen on any of my things, I see House Bill two. Where am I missing thirteen?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Taylor, House Bill thirteen is taken up by the Legislature every session. In in effort to keep state employee wages.
Okay.
To take care of the state employee wages.
Okay, that makes sense.
The whole state.
So it's not specifically addressed in our material?
No.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can just also add, this is the budget that we are preparing is going to be. Developed going through the governor's budget process and everything else, and then when the legislature convenes in twenty five. It doesn't state then that a legislator could propose, could add, somebody from the committee could add. There could be multiple opportunities to do this, so this is the pretty much the first stab. I agree with coming in very conservative at this point and recu- and so that the legislature will recognize, you know, the. View and authority of the Commission, but it doesn't necessarily state that that's how it's going to end up. So when all the sausage making is all done and the legislature signee dies and everything else, we don't know exactly what we're going to get. But I do agree coming in very conservatively will signal to the committee, but it does not prohibit any other additions that might occur.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Tom, yes.
Commissioner Superintendent Aronson. Yes, there are many things that can happen along the way. In budget subcommittee, house appropriations, and claims, back and forth, those hospital twos and and other other bills that affect. But an appropriation that this agency receives from the legislature is not a command to spend.
It's true.
It's an authorization to spend. And if this commission is to have any authority, we should be able to say. In most cases. We were authorized to spend that by the legislature, but we are not going to spend that. Madam Chair.
We're not making those choices now.
We're we're stating a general intention.
Right, we're stating an intention that we want to see the budget stay. Pretty zero based right now.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any public discussion? All right, seeing no further discussion, we'll now vote on the motion, which is to keep spending levels in the two. Thousand twenty six twenty seven biennium to match the twenty twenty four twenty five base. Accepting adjustments in House Bill thirteen and is constrained by availability of state special revenue funds in the M G I A account. And that there be no request in House Bill ten, which is the long range I T planning. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, sorry.
No.
Okay.
No.
Opposed, no.
No.
Okay, the.
Robin, will you let me know, did you abstain or did you vote?
I did, I was aye.
I think you're okay.
So it has been, we have now voted on the motion, it has been accepted. To move that the spending levels in the twenty twenty six biennium. Match the twenty twenty four base, accepting adjustments in House Bill thirteen and is constrained by availability of state special revenue funds in the M G I A account. And that there be no request in House Bill ten, long range I T planning. The motion has passed. Okay, are there any other motions? Okay, if not, we will go to Carmen for her comment.
All right, hold on while I find my notes. Mix it full screen. Okay, here we go. As you all know, our last business meeting took place at the M L A Montana Library Association Conference in Butte. What you may not know is that there is a second event, apparently also traditional. Called Conversation with the Commission. This is an informal event, it's not recorded, no business is being conducted, and it just allows for a discussion between librarians and the commission members. The conversation with the commission happens at the invitation of the M L A. This year, only four librarians came to talk. As we, the commissioners, found out later, the conversation was being boycotted by the M L A and its members. I can't be sure whether the boycott was called for by the official M L A leadership. Or just by a few influential members who convinced their fellow librarians to boycott the event. At some point during the discussion with the librarians that did show up. The commission was handed an unsigned anonymous letter stating that the conversation was being boycotted. I was and continue to be very disappointed about this. First off, an anonymous letter doesn't allow the commission to respond in any way. It's a very cowardly way to communicate and frankly puts me in mind of the Ku Klux Klan members. Who wore masks so they couldn't be identified. You're engaging in similar behavior when you distribute anonymous letters. Secondly, boycotting a meeting that you invited the other party to is childish and certainly doesn't improve the relationship. It's a destructive tactic that doesn't solve a problem, but is designed to make it worse. I can only guess at the intentions of the anonymous boycotters. But my conclusion is that the Montana librarians at the M L A conference did not want to have a discussion. did not want to have a discussion, explain their concerns and positions, and hear the other side. This is undemocratic and unproductive. And I hope those MLA members who called for the boycott and those who participated in the boycott will reconsider their actions for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. This is Tammy. May I speak, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank Carmen for her courage. I also was exceedingly disappointed by the boycott. I think, first, it was very rude. The commissioners finished our work on Wednesday, and many of us, I think all of us, tried to go down and visit with the Butte Library, the reception, at the opening of their library for the reception. And then we pretty much stayed around until three thirty on Thursday so that we could have this meeting. I would like to say that it was one of my favorite parts of the first two years I served on this commission. I thoroughly enjoyed meeting with at least a hundred to a hundred and fifty librarians who attended. The discussions were open and respectful, and we had many differing viewpoints, but it was, as I said, very filled with grace and respect and good ideas of back and forth. I was looking forward to this one, expecting some strong opinions, but still really looking forward to the opportunity to talk with the librarians. The six commissioners were there. One guest, my husband. There were three staff members from our staff. There was the attorney from the legal law. The, the legal librarian.
The law librarian.
The law librarian. And there were six librarians who were brave enough to come. And I thanked them for having the courage to, to do that. And we did have a very, very productive discussion. I think such behavior struck me as, as, it's just very childish and very unprofessional. And I, I watched people passing by outside the door, like, I felt like I was in high school, because they were at grade school even, that people passing by would look in and giggle like, oh, look, you know, they're sitting alone, and it just, it felt very, very unprofessional and childlike. I would encourage that next year we try to have a good conversation because conversation and communication and transparency are what make our republic work. And we're here, we want to hear, we do listen. We like to share our viewpoint, understand your viewpoint to the other people, and just hope that next year the MLA leadership does not direct their folks to be so undemocratic in their opportunity to have a good discussion with people.
I, I did visit with Kirk. And I don't believe that he knew what was going on. He's the, the head of the MLA. He was, he did express his sadness, I'm not sure sadness is the correct word, over what did happen, but I did visit with him, and I, I'm not sure that he did know. I don't think he knew. He, he expressed that he did not know about it. So there possibly was someone else that did, but it was, it was a mishap, and we will all. I, I was very disappointed, but we will all go on from this. And hope that we can have, have better discussions in the future. Is there any other comment about this?
Robin, I would just like to, I'd just like to clarify that Kirk is the executive director of MLA. He is not among the leadership specifically, so he is staff. It would not, he, he's not the president or an officer, so I think that just needs to be clarified.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yes, I should have, sorry about that. Yeah, the executive director. Okay, is any, is there any other comment?
So, Madam Chair.
Brian, go ahead, Elsie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to offer Jenny to have a few words on this, and I don't know what kind of action our commission can take. I know a letter quite possibly could be written very kindly in looking forward more so than looking backward in a partnership. That might be something that we could offer, but I would like to hear from Jenny. She is the face of the State Library for multiple, for multiple entities. And I, I don't want to put you on the spot, Jenny, by any means. I did not attend. I wasn't aware. But I heard about it. And I don't want our library, our state library, or the commission, or anyone that's adjoined to it, to be tarnished. So if you could, Jenny, and you can also say no.
I really don't have a lot of comment except to say that I always support good, open communication. And I really think that, and hope that, that open doors for communication on both sides can find a way to move forward.
Thank you for that. So, Madam Chair, I would suggest a letter be written. And like I said, in a forward view, it is a document. It also says that if somebody leaves the commission, we have a historical record of what had occurred so that we do move forward. It isn't something that is to shame, it isn't something to blame. But just as Jenny had shared, open doors, open communication is a balance that can be taken and should be taken for the patrons of our great state. And I'm just offering that. I don't know when, how, who, or, or what. But I believe a correction to the record from, from this commission might be forthcoming.
Okay. So, do we need to, go ahead.
I, I just would, just remind the commission that we were scheduled to have a commission with the MLA leadership at our last meeting, but we ran out of time. And the incoming, the current, at the time she was the incoming chair, still expressed an interest in meeting with us again at our next meeting. So, and I was under the understanding that we all agreed with that in principle at the time. So I hope that at our next meeting, we still could have that meeting and have that conversation. And perhaps that could be the first steps towards mending this relationship.
So writing a letter would be the first, or meeting would be the first step? What do you?
I, I'm not saying either or. I'm just asking, in saying that I think it would still be valuable to have that conversation at our next meeting, to invite the MLA leadership to meet with us.
Okay, yes, I do believe that that was on our, our agenda for June, correct, Jenny?
We can add it, yes.
Okay, I was under the impression that we had already, I thought we had discussed that, but maybe I discussed it with Kirk. Possibly. I'm not sure who I discussed it with, but yes, if you could go ahead and put that on our agenda, one of the items. Okay, and then we will invite the leadership. If you could get me the, all the names of the current officers, I'll, I'll send off an email, just inviting them. What, what is the consensus for writing a letter? Anyone have any discussion about that?
I think it's an excellent idea. I would like to follow it up with that. I think the fact the meeting was not recorded and not reported on and not, not well attended, I, I think has to be acknowledged. I think it's important to acknowledge that. The best way to move forward from it is to acknowledge it happened and hope for better in the future. Next time it'll be in Bozeman, so I will certainly be in attendance if I'm still on the commission and Lord willing and the creek don't rise, we will be there. So I just would like to point out that we were very disappointed. We would like an opportunity to have a good opportunity to share communications in the future and, and leave it in their hands because they did open up the time and invite us. I, I think it's important to remember that it's the Montana Library Association who set it in their agenda and invited us to be there. And so in fact, we actually asked them to give us more time because we had an hour in the past, and like I said, we had over a hundred people, and it was wonderful. And so we have now and a half this time, but.
Okay. Should we form a committee to write the letter?
I think.
I'm sorry? Two of you spoke at the same time, so I'm sorry. Elsie and, and Tammy.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was just coughing.
Okay.
Just the, just the advent of the allergies of the spring, so my apologies.
I understand your point.
But I do, if you want to formally form a, a committee, or you could write one, or however, pass it around and then have it go out. I think time is of the essence. And again, I would just strongly encourage positive, more communication within that, but what it does is it recognizes, and I think that is, that's important. It, it, I wasn't there, but I believe a recognition is important. But also, I'm just going to say it again and again, moving forward, it's what this is all about. It's moving, it's moving everything forward in a positive light.
Okay.
I also really believe it's important to note that how disappointing it was for those who went there anticipating an opportunity for open communication. It was disappointing. And it was a missed opportunity. I appreciated Commissioner Custard's opinion on that. It was a missed opportunity.
Okay. All right, I will gladly draft a letter. If anybody has any ideas, send them to me, and we will get that passed around, see what everyone thinks. And I will put a positive, definite, positive spin on it, go moving forward. And then we can add whatever, and we'll make sure that we get the everyone's approval on it. Is that all right?
Madam Chair, can I ask to clarify two things, if it's not out of order? The first thing is, if Jenny would clarify the email she sent, that, that we would not be having grant offerings this year. Just, Tom made mention of it, that our income is down considerably from what we used to get, to get that, the real estate fees. Would Jenny just again briefly put in the record that that is happening?
Sure, thanks for that, Tammy. As we talked about at your April meeting, and again with the Finance Committee, the recordation fees that flow into the Montana Geographic Information Account are down considerably over the last year and substantially less than the appropriation that we received from the legislature this last session. So staff have spent a considerable amount of time looking at projections and revenue trends and made a number of recommendations for tightening our belts into the coming year to make sure that we're able to retain enough revenue in that account to support our regular operations. When we met with the Finance Committee to plan for this meeting, we also talked about the fact that some of that belt tightening might also include not awarding the FY twenty five MGI grants as we would typically do at this time. And based on our, our best recommendations, we did decide that we would not carry forward with those grant awards in FY twenty five. We do have the statutory authority to award off cycle grants. And so we will be looking at that revenue, and if we hit certain markers in the next year or so, where we feel comfortable that we could make grant awards, we would bring that recommendation back to the commission.
And how much of a cut are you looking at that is?
We have attempted to reduce spending by up to a million dollars.
Okay. And you said that would most likely include not renewing the contract of the grant trainer?
That's right.
Which is a okay, subcontractor, I guess you'd say. And then my other point of clarification was based at the very end of the meeting, when we when we officially did not renew with the library, the Montana Library Trust Fund, the one that is not ours, theirs versus ours. We did say that we would meet, put it on the next meeting. But what I understood was that that would be only to discuss what the relationship would be with our staff and the people with that trust, that that would be a short conversation. They had asked for clarification on how they dealt with our staff. And am I correct in assuming that it's not a report, but just a short discussion with recommendation from Jenny on how to have interaction with them? Is that what other people remember?
Madam Chair, I don't remember.
Yes.
But there are recorded minutes that could be referred to.
Yes, I can't remember specifically what. I do know that my expectation is that the staff can, of course, visit with, with the trust for Montana libraries. Of course, and any donations that they would like to give are fine, as far as, and that is my own personal opinion. We, I believe that we were just trying to follow the, what, the legal advice that we have been given to say that, that there's just, it was mud. I realize that it had been looked at previous by, by legal, but this administration feels that it's a little muddy in there, so.
I did listen to the minutes, and it was, the, the conversation pretty much came as a result of the executive director of that, of their, their trust saying exactly what you just did. What is our relation with the present staff? Are there guidelines? And we said, well, we could ha- have that on the meeting, but it would be that specific. Just what are the guidelines? So I, I wanted to, following up on that, make sure this was not a long agenda, action agenda item, just maybe even an input agenda from Jenny on how she felt that could be handled.
Okay, how, what do you, and Jenny, is that, would that be an appropriate thing for you to go ahead and, and, I mean, you, I believe, do you, do you understand how we feel about that?
I do. I do. And, and, and we could have a, a short discussion where I share my opinion at, at the June meeting.
Definitely, okay. That would be fine. I think that would be the best way to do it. I don't think that we need to have a specific motion, et cetera, there, but the, just to gen, just as.
Just information.
Yes, informational.
An information item.
Right. All right, is there any other business before we go on to public comment? If not, is there any public comment on any matter not contained in this agenda and that is within the jurisdiction of the State Library Commission? Okay, is there any other business or announcements? Our next meeting will be in June. I believe it is June, what, fourteenth? Is that, is that in my head, or? I'm sorry.
I think it's the twelve.
Okay, sorry, June twelfth. There's, yes, our big Geraldine celebration is June fourteenth, which I am also heading up, so. Right, I can't, sorry. Yes, so June twelfth, nine o'clock in Helena, correct?
At the Capitol, correct.
At the Capitol, all right, great.
And Madam Chair, we have, we've in the past talked about doing a meeting not in Helena, in the hall. Have we talked about perhaps setting a place for a different meeting? I know last year we did it in Columbus.
Right. Have we just, we have not discussed that.
I just. I just, it helps to have an idea if we're going to be going somewhere different.
Commissioners, do you have a preference on, on having a meeting outside of Helena? One option that's been in the back of my mind is that the Belgrade, Belgrade is building a new library, and you could ask if we could host a meeting there next spring, if, if you continue to want to have a meeting around MLA, that could happen at Belgrade since the conferences Tammy said will be in Bozeman.
So that could be our travel, travel one. And had then have the September, no, no, October, October meeting then would be held in Helena again, okay. How does that sound? Belgrade, that sounds wonderful to me. I'd love to see the new Belgrade Library. How's that with everyone else?
I'm just not particularly sold on going somewhere else in the fall when the weather can be debatable, and we have such good access with Zoom that people can contact us. But I wasn't sure what the reasoning was for that practice. It seemed already be in when I came on, so. I just.
We don't, we don't have to, we don't have to do it. We, you know, we certainly didn't do it during the pandemic. It's just something that we've, we've always done. It would save some money if we, if we held the meeting in Belgrade during the conference next April, rather than having to travel meetings.
Be great.
I think that's a great idea. Any, anyone else have an opinion?
I could.
Good idea.
All right, okay. Okay, well, thank you. Any other business or announcements? Okay, thank you so much, everyone, for your hard work. I appreciate all the information provided in the preparation that went into this meeting. With that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, it has been moved and seconded. The meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you in June.
Thank you, and thanks for the good job.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.